Thanks, everyone. We're coming to our October 8th study session. We really, we had the solid waste franchise agreements, which is the second part of our meeting on this agenda before, but we really appreciate Metro coming at the last minute to give us a presentation on their regional systems facilities plan. I heard this at the Metro Mayor's Consortium a few weeks back, and I thought it was, you know, an important, important development for the region and Milwaukee included. Unless the city manager or the finance director had something they wanted to add?
No, Michael just had a slide that effectively tuned that up here, so I think, yeah, over to Metro.
Thank you. The need of government, environmental, fire, leadership, our partners, and our environmental protection, environmental, sort of departmental structure, we have a lot to do. I have here with me Luis Sandoval, he's our principal planner, and Wayne Commission Environmental Services. And we really appreciate the opportunity to come today and share with you updates on the system facilities plan. We're also having answer questions around budget and food, I will include some slides on that. And talk about how the priorities in the system facilities plan are help support visions for waste management and protecting the environment. So we have a bit of a two-part presentation today. I will go ahead and go to the next slide. So, and I know some of this is, I was speaking to Mayor Vady earlier, I know much of this is new, so I'm hoping that this can be a start of a continued conversation. And we are happy to come back to dive more into questions around the environmental role, the garbage, I think it's gonna be some priorities within your community. But I want to start just with the 2030 Regional Waste Plan. This is Metro's strategic plan for guiding their regions reuse, recycling, and garbage system with the key priorities listed here. This plan was adopted by Metro Council in 2019 after much community engagement to outline what are the programs and services that are desired in the region. And we partnered with communities to move this work forward. Today, we're here to discuss one of the key priorities of the plan, it's focused on ensuring equitable and affordable services for everyone. And to address this priority, Metro has been working on the Regional System Facilities Plan that takes a really holistic view at the regional waste system to look at where we have gaps and where we need to invest in improvements. So just to give a little bit of context on our current state, if you go to the next slide, is an example of one of the facilities in our system, which is Metro South. Some folks refer to this as the dump, it's my neighbor's favorite place to go on the weekends to recycle his slush cardboard. This facility opened to the public on April 11th, 1983. It was originally designed to host an incinerator, and the facility was to manage up to 800 tons of waste every day. Fast forward to June of 2023, Metro South processed more than 330,000 tons of waste. And I had to ask ChatGPT to do the percentage increase of this, and it is a 40,000% of that increase from what this facility was intended to handle. The challenges to this are daily for our staff that work there, and we really do our best at operating an overburdened facility in a safe and efficient manner. When you go out there, you can see the traffic control team navigating the commercial trucks from the residents and really needing to have people on the site because the site really wasn't really the right thing. To manage both of those, commercial and small business and residences, nor the amount of materials that moves through that. So to keep high-quality materials out of the landfill, we need to have more space to separate out recyclable for reuse and repairable items and ensure safety and traffic growth through our facilities. So redevelopment of the site is much needed. And Metro South is just one example of how over the last 40 years, the garbage recycling system needs have changed in the region. The plan is intended to address gaps that we know are experienced differently by people throughout the region. Like current distribution of facilities, meaning that some people have really easy access depending on where you live to get rid of a mattress or to take larger rates for disposal while others do not. Next slide. We also know that we live in a place where people care about the environment and are willing to spend time and money and to keep valuable resources out of the landfill. This is a picture that one of the, one of our staff took that was actually attending as a resident, a local recycling event that was hosted by James Recycling. And people waited more than half an hour to recycle items that could be not be taken up, collected at the curb at $3 a bag. People were showing up there with multiple bags. This is just one example of the values in our region as it relates to the environment and the desire to keep valuable resources out of the landfill. So address the aging system and the gaps that we're experiencing, Metro Council directed us to complete a system facilities plan to take a holistic look at the region's facilities and identify where do we need more investments to improve access to facilities and services for everyone. The plan is a 20-year vision to provide a roadmap for future investment. It's a vision document, so a concept level, to identify facility and program investments for the region to pursue, essentially a blueprint. There will be many decision points along the way. Hopefully, we'll get, if you haven't already had the link to the plan, it is available on our website, make sure that we get that to you. So the implementation plans will follow the adoption of the facilities plan. It also calls out areas where we need to do more additional study and investigation. Next slide. So there's a lot on this slide. And it is here to reflect over the last 18 months, Metro has engaged with local government, industry, community, tribal governments across the region, hosted an international symposium, and engaged with Metro Council to develop a set of investments that are included in the plan. And this slide just shows the many touchpoints that we have with the advisory committees that Metro hosts, as well as standing committees, such as the Metro Mayor's Consortium that we were at at the end of September, and other engagements that we've done, such as roundtables, local government staff, nonprofit organizations, and community groups. The, this slide just shows the outline of the plan and gives you a roadmap, the values and outcomes. It includes a gap analysis that shows where we have gaps for both commercial and residential customers, the potential scenario, the scenarios and potential investments that we went through. And the upcoming period is an opportunity to take a closer look at the investment strategy and the phasing cost and financing for the plan. So next, I just want to briefly walk through our process for the plan, kind of what we did, and then touch on the investments. And then Luis is going to cover some additional information on the cost and financing. So quickly, just a recap of what we did. After we established the values and outcomes to guide the project, the project team used a combination of engagement and technical research to identify facility gaps in the region. And some of the key gaps identified include in certain parts of the region, like Washington, D.C., including East Montloma County, people lack access to services to drop off recyclables, household hazardous waste, and large household items that cannot be reused. For companies that collect garbage and recycling from people's homes and businesses, on behalf of cities and counties, there are facility gaps in terms of access costs and investor resilience for food waste, yard debris, and garbage. And reuse and repair businesses and organizations told Metro they need more warehouse and flexible space to sort, repair, and store items for reuse. At the symposium in the fall, where we brought in a panel of international experts from around the world to share out innovative ways that they're providing sustainable management of materials and system, we brought local governments, community groups, and industry together to look at four scenarios about how we could go big-picture-wise, different ways to address the gaps in the system. And you can see the different scenarios that are outlined here. After, this is just a picture of the symposium. After the symposium and feedback from Metro Council, we heard strong support for the distributed model. And this was the idea of having smaller facilities throughout the region rather than big, large-scale transport stations to collect materials. The survey results showed that people appreciated elements from the other scenarios too, including more support for reuse organizations and improving safety and efficiency at our existing facilities. The benefits of the model, the distributed model that we heard a lot of support for were the increased access to services, increased recycling rates, and better handling of household hazardous waste and hard-to-recycle materials. The plan aims to enhance public and commercial facilities, food waste processing, and support reuse organization over the next 20 years. So this slide features the four distinct investment areas. The first one is focused on community drop-off depots. This is the development of six community drop-off depots for reuse recycling, household hazardous waste, compost, and cell hall garbage services. The second area is focused on reuse, so funding for local reuse and repair businesses and building a reuse warehouse and reuse mall. The third is focused on partnering with private facilities to provide more infrastructure for waste for commercial haulers. And then lastly, converting Metro Central into a regional hub for food waste and yard debris and investing in local private facilities. So I will quickly just walk through each of these in a little bit more detail. So the vision for their community drop-off depots is to fill gaps that were identified by residents and small businesses. So providing more locations across the region to drop off items, as I mentioned, reuse, recycling, household hazardous waste, cell hall, cell hall garbage that were really designed for the public and small businesses. So I spoke earlier about Metro South being this combined facility where you're seeing large partial route trucks come in as well as residents and small businesses. The idea in this plan is to separate those uses. And so the depots would really be focused on making it easy in, easy out, community amenity that would make it easier for people to get rid of materials that maybe were used or properly disposed. This is just an example of a depot that is in, that's focused on.
Yeah, can I clarify, Dr. McGuire? When you talk about small businesses versus commercial uses, would a commercial use be like what's happening in our industrial area, or is industrial waste being put somewhere separate? Like, what is the scale of a small business versus a commercial use?
That's a great question. So when I think commercial, I'm referring to route trucks, like the big trucks that you see that come curb sites and collect your residential or business trash. When I say small businesses, it is primarily people who pick up trucks that may be doing junk-in or yard debris service or to bad effects. So I bet.
Yeah. Building contractors, landscapers, that were there often, like calling to Metro South, Metro Central.
So you're calling those among the small.
Yeah, I appreciate that point. I mean, that's us getting lost in our garbage and recycling world of how we make distinctions that not everybody understands.
I'm not gonna say, I guess the follow-up then, when you do have industrial waste coming from our two different industrial areas, is that not going to a facility like Metro South, or is that going to Metro South, and I guess if so, then what is up yet?
There are six private transport stations in the region and two public ones. Generally, waste flows to the closest station. And so I would imagine, we do have haulers in the room, that they may be able to speak, some probably go to Metro South, some probably go to Trap Tail Waste Management. You know, some of the companies that are vertically integrated will take, you know, the waste to their transportation. So, so it varies. The transport stations really serve as the place to re, like, drop and reload, and then it gets reloaded from the transportation down to the landfill for final destination. And one of the struggles we have now, particularly with Metro South, is we have to prioritize this space for garbage because we need to get to, to move that to its final destination. And we're really limited on being able to provide, you know, bins for the public that may, like, can't put it out at the curb for either it's hazardous and you don't want them to put it at the curb, or it's oversized, or they had a really big party and they just want to get rid of it, bottles and cans of it.
That's super well, I'll test, thank you.
No, yeah, thank you for the question. So I'll move on to the next investment area. Oh, we also have this slide. So you can see the approximate location of the six community depots envisioned here. There is one for each district and some of the modeling estimates for drive times and recovery. So looking at what are we gonna get in terms of increased recycling from these depots? And moving the baseline right now, 40% of the metro region population is within drive, 20-minute driving distance to the nearest depot. And the construction of the six depots would move people to 98% of the population within 20, 20 minutes of a depot. And again, these are conceptual placement. Obviously, we will work with the cities and the counties if this investment strategy needs more work for the final destination, but this gives you a sense. We also have for, you know, the desire for this isn't enough. We need to do more than six depots. We were really challenged with coming up with an investment strategy that was measured and takes into account responsibilities around fees and ensuring that we're doing something that is better, but then also being able to address some of the gaps that are experienced from residents in the region that live far away from transport stations. The next example or investment area is for reuse and repair. So as I mentioned, this includes investments in a reuse warehouse and mall. Both of these projects will be done in partnership with reuse organizations for both planning and operation. The next area gets focused on organics, food waste, yard debris, to improve transfer and processing capacity for organics in the region. Metro will continue to invest in Metro Central, so that's a public transportation in Northwest Portland to serve as a regional hub for receiving residential and commercial organics from haulers. And second would be to develop additional public-private partnerships, so we have additional hubs for organics. So this is a gap that we currently have. We have a desire to expand food waste collection for residents in the region, but we don't have enough transport station capacity for haulers to unload that food, food waste to have it reloaded and then move to an end destination. Metro Central manages 70% of food waste in the region, and we need to build out more, or more investment in equipment as well as other hubs throughout the region. So there's more places for, for folks to go to move back. We also know that this is a big area for our climate goals and getting food waste out of the waste stream. So the last area is focused on looking at our commercial transportation. Council expressed support for resourcing over time, the two metro commercial transport stations that provide, that are focused on providing services that are more challenging for the private sector, such as cell hall and organics transport stations. Because the plan is proposing to convert Metro South, as I mentioned, to a community drop-off depot, this would create a service gap for commercial haulers in the southern part of the region. To fill this gap, Metro would take a phased approach to seek, to seek to authorize a new commercial transportation or develop a public-private partnership to build a new facility in the southern part of the region. So essentially moving commercial off-site for Metro South and making that primarily. The other area I mentioned at the beginning, that the plan also includes additional areas for study. And so there are two important areas that need more time for research, assessment, and discussion. And these are focused on wet waste tonnage flow. And when I say wet waste, that's garbage versus dry waste, full-pierced kernels, the specialty in dry waste. So that's construction and demolition debris. These are some of the distinctions, not, not conclusive, these are the fun words that we get to say on a regular basis. Waste. So the action areas include, first, to study the impact of lower-end removing Metro's tonnage guarantee, including the evaluation of the wet waste tonnage allocation program. Currently, Metro allocates how much waste each transportation gets. The second is to look at private facility regulations to best serve the public interest. And so these actions would take place as, as soon as Metro Council adopts the plan. So now I will turn it over to Luis for just the last few slides, uh, to give you a say.
Thanks, Martin. Good evening, councilors. As Martin mentioned, my name, my name is Luis Sandoval, I am the principal planner at Metro. This slide, this slide has the map that summarizes all the initiatives in the, in the draft plan, in a single map. And, you know, that there's a few of them that have circles around them. Those are locations of close facilities or in areas where Metro doesn't currently own the sites. So, and they, so those are the ones that Martin mentioned are placed there conceptually, there's no specific place to put.
Excuse me, could you kind of walk us through this? I can't really read the.
Yeah, yes. So the blue, the blue dots are the six community drop-off depots.
So those have the dark blue?
The dark blue, yes. I'm a little bit colorblind, so I might ask for help. So the, the dark blue, the community drop-off depot, cell hall facilities focus on accepting materials for reuse, recycling, household hazardous waste in public. The, the aqua, I guess, green aqua in the center, those are the reuse and repair investments. So there is a reuse funded program that was involved metro building any facility, but providing funding to reuse and repair organizations to, to build the capacity to accept more materials for reuse. The reuse mall, the reuse warehouse that Martin mentioned. And, and those have a big circle around them because there is that one, no location for those, but we are, the goal would be to place them at a central location. Then the, what is, the green, green.
Like swan.
Sorry, there you go. Those, so that's only one, right? What are you talking about, the organics? Organic, so the organics circles, those green circles represent Metro Central, investments in Metro's transport stations to turn it over time into a facility that only accepts waste from haulers and it focuses on, on organics. So that was the organics hub. And then the other five, five or four green circles represent the public-private partnerships that are envisioned to build additional facilities that accept organics from hauls. So from trucks that collect from businesses and channels.
And so when you say organics, do you mean the food waste from commercial, just that? Or do you also mean, like, yard debris?
Residential, what we call residential organics, which is the food waste basically yard debris. But it is focused on the commercial organics, so the food waste that comes out of restaurants, hospitals, grocery stores. That is collected separately, and so it's handled separately. That is a primary goal for, for the plan, the primary focus of the plan in the organics area. But, but there are areas of the region that were, there are also places that have, that haulers have to have a longer distance to, to, their residential, what is collected from homes and, yeah. And then the last, the only dot, the only, the only circle there is the, the commercial transfer station that will be built through a public-private partnership to replace what Metro South provides for haulers. So, like, Metro South will be converted to a depot, then the haulers will have to go to a new facility.
So you're saying those little white dots?
No, the.
The purple one in purple.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it.
Yes.
And one of the little white ones?
The little white ones represent, yeah, the existing private transport stations.
Thank you.
May I ask a couple questions about this slide? Okay. So it looks like District 2 is the only one that would have the commercial transfer station? Is that, is that already determined?
Because we have existing private transfer stations, they also serve commercial haulers. So we have actually a total of nine, nine transport stations in the system. Here, we show the private transport stations that are within the metro boundary. So you see private and WRI, those two are the closest ones on the, on the west side to Metro South. And then you also see three, three of them in east.
So I see the private ones, but I guess what I'm asking is the purple commercial transfer station that's proposed. It, the only proposed station in the metro area would be proposed in District 2.
Yes.
And then another question that I have about these dots, and I know that the locations are not determined as of yet, but in your plan, have you done an analysis for what would be, what, what the, what the space and the proximity requirements would be for each type? So like, for example, if you're going to have, you know, what do organics transfer station, it doesn't make sense to put that, like, downtown Milwaukee because you have certain parameters that are in place for the, for the processing and, like, smells and sounds and all of those things, right? So these are just kind of plopped on the map, or are these?
So.
There's a little bit of. Yeah, industrial have to be in industrial zones.
Yeah, typically, heavy, heavy industrial land, it allows for solid waste, purposeless, without, you know, use. So, yeah, so we're looking at 204 acres in size for the depot.
And what are some of the requirements that you need to have in place for an organics station?
I think, I mean, it is, it is, heavy industrial is the main, like, you cannot build an organic facility, an organics, a transfer station that has compressible waste and hanging on land, so that's a non-alien requirement.
What's the proximity from residential that you need to have, or?
It would be the same as, well, and the thing to think about organics, it's moved in the same day. It's in and out, it's less like a composting facility where the waste is in position and being processed for a long period of time. The, the transport stations are made to dump, pack it up, move it out in a day. So we don't really hold food waste for more than a few hours before it's moved to the next location. So it falls within a transfer station operation. I do want to know, just for context, for commercial transport stations, we have surplus capacity in the region. So there's not really a need for us to move, to build any new transportation with the exception of wanting them to be geographically placed so that the system can be more efficient and being able to have that somebody not driving all the way across a county to get to a transfer station.
But if someone were in, like, the upper portion of District 5, they would still be driving quite a ways to get to a commercial transfer station.
So this is a challenge we have with Metro Central, because Metro Central would still be accepting waste from commercial haulers. It's just that the focus would shift to organics. And depending on Metro Council decisions, more could flow to private transport stations. But, so, yeah, apologies for that, but you will do Metro Central and the Neoplagmas partnership that will still be accepting waste from haulers. Those will be the major facilities, right? Cross the title. So this, this slide shows the estimated conceptual cost for the proposed investments by each of the four areas, which add up to about $273 million over the 20-year implementation period, and that is in $2024. And for comparison, the original scenarios that were presented by the project back in September, last year? There was a symposium in September last year where we presented the scenarios that Martin discussed. Those scenarios ranged in cost from $280 million to more than $800 million. They ranged from $280 million to more than $800 million, the scenarios that were proposed back in September.
A year ago.
A year ago. The investments in the draft, in this plan would be financed through revenue bonds with debt paid off over twenty-year periods. And the estimated increase in the garbage bill for the typical single-family household bill, for the typical, typical single-family household in the region over the next two days or so is $1.50 to $2 per month, and this is on average in today's dollar. And this stays within what we heard folks would be willing to pay for increased services at this symposium that we had last year. It is important to note again that this is a 20-year vision plan. So the specific costs and timing of each of these investment projects will be determined in Metro's annual budget process. Metro's annual budget development and fee setting will be guided by Metro Council's solid waste G policy and with input from the regional advisory committee. Next slide. The proposed investments align with regional priorities of increased assets, waste reduction, and keeping costs affordable. And this slide shows some of the estimated benefits from the plan, including annual tons recovered once the plan is fully. The, the projects in the draft plan could prevent an estimated 100,000 tons, metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions per year. And this is invested in every year 2045, when, when all investments are fully in place. And this would be likely moving more than 20,000 in passing at any given year. The next slide shows, as Martin mentioned, we have the draft plan up for public comment. And there are two, two ways to provide feedback on the draft plan. And there's, there's a public comment form on the website. People can also call in and leave a message, a phone message. Uh, people can also call in, uh, and leave a message, a phone message. And, and then people can also take, uh, an online survey. Um, that is separate from the public comment form.
So, oh, yeah, so. Wanted to see if you have any additions on the draft plan, if there are any areas of specific input that are necessary to bring forward to Metro.
I have a question. It's for this server. Any thoughts on changes to southern transfer station? Guys are making.
Imagine they're gonna submit.
Well, I guess initially, Councilor Messi, uh, you know, we work very closely with Metro initiatives. The value way was best for the solid waste system. Us, WM, other players in the market have facilities in certain areas, so. While a lot of this is conceptual, we are in discussions with a lot on how this is going forward. I don't, you know, I don't know that I have a, uh, set, you know, response or, um. Any opposition or, or support at this point, but I, I would just say we continue to work with Metro to. Provide for the best system for the community at the, at the best rate possible, which. The representation of the challenging, you know, all of the geographical challenges. Logistical challenges of each franchise and jurisdiction, so. That's, I think, where I will. So you're, you're tired of the.
The one fifty to two dollars a month for residential increase, is that, would that be something that's seen through the. The waste hauler bill that we all get and, and I guess, like, how does the process reflect the contracts that you have?
So, that's a great question, so the, as Louise mentioned. The overall funding will be done through revenue bonds and that. The revenue is either collected on every ton of garbage. And I actually have a couple of slides that we could walk through, the fee setting and budget that would help. So we charge, um, the regional system fee on every ton of garbage, for example, that we fund the community depots. And that is collected, um, added to the different facilities. So essentially, it ends up getting passed off through collection fees. Um, that are set at the local, local government level, but you set those collection fees.
And then there's, there's a portion that, that, uh, of those bonds that would be paid off by those charges that match for the transfer station, so. So self-help customers, uh.
Yeah.
You know, the landscapers, contractors, the local community people, they do pay if they bring garbage. They do pay if they bring garbage, they don't pay if they recycle. Or, in this case, we don't take advantage for reuse right now at metro facilities, but at the depots, those would be accepted for the.
Okay.
But so the combination of user fees and, uh, the regional system fee, which is, uh, charged at both private and public facilities.
And do you have an idea of what the increase in user fee would look like?
It depends on how much time it increases over time. And so every year Metro sets those fees based on how much time should be expected over the next year. So we have a conceptual estimates. Uh, and that's why we use this measure of the single-family household bill, because ultimately that reflects both, both things.
Just a clarification question to kind of connect the dots, but you're talking about the fee charge, I should say, is that the tip fee? So I, well, and I wonder, would it be helpful if we, we could answer our questions on the, um. System facilities plan, and then I can walk through the budget, which breaks down the fees, so the tip fee is actually a compilation of fees. It's not singular.
Yeah.
And so I have a slide on that, and it may be helpful to kind of walk through next. Cause I, in, in part, you know, often concept plans don't come with like. The exact cost because the concept, and that's really developed at the next, you kind of set the cap. And then in each phase, you detail out the specific costs and then there's decision points around, this is too much, we don't want to do it anymore. The environment has changed, we'll do more. And so we did our best to kind of estimate what it would be at the, at the, at the concept level, but. Doing assumptions, like you mentioned earlier, actually looking at what is the size of it, you know, it doesn't need to be in the draw, so we did our best to, um. Include all of those assumptions.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I was just getting, my second question was, was about the system development plan in general. And so who, which cities do we have to arm wrestle to get, uh, the reusable?
I think apart from like economic development and job, I, something that we, well, I'm really interested to see what the public survey says around like, how often do you use it? Is it something, that is a conversation to have, like who is interested in posting that? We saw some really cool examples of where this is really, really successful, and I, and I do think there's an ethos in this region around, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, that's part of the, part, part of the conversation, we can include that in the comments.
But I imagine you're looking for something that's already a pre-existing building, or are you open to building something?
We're open, it's wide open, and there's been a lot of interest from these organizations too, of that kind of being. A, a partnership, right, with the public jurisdiction and Metro and the organization.
And the conceptual cost, assume Metro buying a single building randomly, but, but Martin, like Martin said. You know, there's an option to lease space, uh, you know, back in the south side, and, and, you know, don't have part of that. Or if, if there's enough interest, those smaller versions of it, in, in preference.
So like where there are vacant buildings, it's going to be renovated into smaller. What we heard a lot around was the desire to set up, set it in some instances, having big scale things. Cause like, five years ago, we were looking at building large scale trans, all-service transport stations. They toured Washington, they had an amazing transportation there. And then shifted where folks wanted them more just, more walkable, more distributed, smaller facilities. Uh, one-stop shopping, where you can go and drop off a whole bunch of different things. One place that's more localized, so I think the reuse concept could take on that. Okay, so that input would be really well.
Thank you. Sorry.
Um, couple of questions, and when you give the range from two hundred to eight hundred million, that's what it could cost, right, over the twenty, is that what you're saying?
The scenarios that were presented back in September, and those range, like Martin was saying, the most expensive scenario was the person who can go. All-service transfer station.
Yeah, right.
So it's transfer stations that serve both self-help customers and the commercial haulers in one place. At large, yeah.
Uh, and the two seventy-three, that, that price tag, that's, that's estimated, what it'd cost over twenty years? But I'm assuming that's not counting for inflation?
We, we present it there without inflation, with the, 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 the cost calculator, that, so we, we'll, we'll work with the contractor. The contractor estimates the cost based on what they know today. And then they escalate the cost based on what they think inflation will be, so we have that estimate, but since people don't. Generally understand inflation, we show the, the numbers in terms of.
So, in the event that we do, you know. Run into higher inflation, if you choose, that's possibly, are there any mechanisms in place to ensure that the dollar fifty to two dollars doesn't exceed to like ten dollars?
Part of it is. Planning ahead of what, what these should look like over time, in the, my slideshow, or in that next series. Historically, we've really been able to maintain stable fees over time, and in part because we have reserves to be able to. When we do experience inflationary increases, keep that rate, rate lower by using our savings to do that. What has happened, which I'll share, is COVID, um, disrupted. You know, our, our organization, just like so many other organizations, where we had to, um. Spend down our reserves to just maintain critical services, and so if, I hope we did, I can't remember the exact number. It used to be at sixty million, went down to thirty million, and we still required to have a forty-five day operating requirement. So right now, we're in the process of, and this is partly why you saw a higher fee increase for Metro over building that reserve. Because we need to have that to be able to maintain, uh, wanting to maintain more critical for it. So that would be the, I, I believe that is the direction that we would, uh, would get from our council and looking at implementation of this. Plan is to structure it in a way that we're able to maintain predictable fees over time. It's, as you look at the plan, you'll see it's a phased approach. So there's different ways that, like, some years it would be lower, some years it would be higher, so if we are. Charging a kind of consistent increase, we can put in the under years more work into the reserve, so you're keeping buying it down the, the out years. And again, it will be a phased approach, so I think if, you know, we finish phase one, there will be an assessment of. Do we want to go forward, is there still appetite for that? There's a lot of planning and design work that would need to be done before Metro would trigger that to pull that on. Out, and so that all will include decision-making and, you know, participation from the advisory committees, uh, to ensure that we continue to have a support. That's made a bit more detailed and operationalized, so I'm curious.
Appreciate that, thank you. Um, the other parts of that, uh, is not the dollar fifty and two dollars, that's an estimate of what you think the haulers will be to increase their fee by, right, or is that?
That's just the, that's just the metro fees.
So that's not counting, it's okay to be a, a bigger increase depending on what this does to them, so I might ask your side.
Yeah.
What does this do to the haulers, how does this affect the haulers?
Well, it, it depends on which haul you're talking about, because.
In, in general, I guess.
No, 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 but, so some haulers would be driving best, best ones is to, uh, to the closest facility to provide, uh, organics, uh. Especially organics, right? Uh, for some haulers, that the only transfer stations and, and manholes, for example, that might be a different equation. Uh, because then the, you know, they. Some, some customers are gonna shift from, from going to their facility to a metro facility because it's closer, right? So that, so it's hard to say which, which, uh. How private facility in general and haulers would be affected.
And the reason I ask is because I'm assuming if there's an increase on the consumer, there's, it's like the increase on the businesses involved, in, in some way. So i- if there is an increase in volume of the business, that's typically passed out through the business. So it's, it's not necessarily just the double fifty to two dollars, it could be actually more than that of an increase that we could, that consumers could potentially see, and I, I agree.
Not related to the facilities that we're building. Um, it would be related to whatever fee increases that, that they're, that they may be experiencing if you're expanding services, if they're making capital investments. Like when we said, it really depends on the particular business, for like. For some that are driving farther, they could see a cost saves. If we really locate, um, that corporate transportation in Metro South closer. Um, that might be bringing their cost down. But it's not gonna impose fees on the collection companies for the facilities that, that we're building. It certainly will be an additional fee that is included in the calculation of garbage recycling rates. But as a part of that, the investment that you're getting back as additional services, like what we said, the community depots will be free. Um, for people to drop off materials that they can't, you know, that they may not be able to. Do at the curb, so they, they're might, it'll be a taking for, you know, theoretically. You're paying for a higher cost for somebody to be picked up at the curb, that you'll be able to take it. Um, to a facility for recycling or reuse or repair.
Uh, I appreciate that, and then my, uh. Last question is then for accountability. Uh, because currently, you know, we saw some pretty disturbing figures on the recycle rate over at Metro South. Uh, at about four percent, uh, compared to some of the other haulers. I was curious what, what accountability measure would be put in place to ensure that these locations are recycling at a rate that.
Okay, yeah.
You know, because, in particular, we have a climate action plan.
Yeah.
And it's really anti-fidable to be sending stuff there with such a low recycle rate and a claim that. Behind the climate actions, or how does Metro Town providing accountability for those, for these facilities?
I think that's a, a great point, even so Louise also serves on our analytics team and does a lot of our measurement work and program evaluation, so. That is something that I think is critical, that we do have indicators at our transfer station that are reporting out on our, on our. As I mentioned, Metro South is crowded, we have to make some decision. It, around what we're able to do in terms of material recovery and, and meeting baseline requirements, but not able. To do a lot more than that because of the limited space there. But I think we definitely should be accountable and reporting out on, on those measures, and, and part of the plan is discussion around. Accountability and indicators for this work as well.
Appreciate that. So, go ahead.
Uh, a good question, so in your plan in chapter seven, where you're talking about implementation. And the implementation tool that you discuss, uh, developing a workforce agreement as an component of. Is that implying that you're pursuing, um, project labor agreements on the construction of these facilities, or? Um, is this something you all have talked about?
I think it's, you're gonna refer to like a community benefits agreement.
Sure, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so, so part of, um, previous projects. There was a, there was a previous project that attempted to relocate Metro South to a mainline facility because of the issues that were in this prime. Including the old recovery, because of lack of space, right, and the traffic. Uh, that, I would committing, a citizen community advisory citizens, they develop criteria for citing facilities. So this gets a little bit of what you, I think, really you were asking about, like, what is the proximity to, to residential areas? Where should the new facility located? And part of it included developing a community benefits agreement with the host community. And those typically include, uh, things like priority for hiring from the media community when a job. Where, where there's a job, so. So that, that's part of the implementation, and those are the things that, if approved. And then we will be detailing each of the projects, uh, each facility will be directed to build such a, that agreement with the host community, right?
Definitely, with the host community itself, not the labor or way.
No.
Oh, my.
No, without jurisdiction, whether that be a city or county.
Yeah.
With the concept behind it, this being an amenity, partly, you know, it's how do we bring additional benefits?
Have there been discussions about pursuing PLAs on these projects at all, or?
Yeah.
Cause I know that labor and the trades really struggled with being able to bid on some of Metro's projects in the past, and. A PLA, um, comes with host benefits, uh, so much as you see projects, with data on a quicker timeline. And so I, I would just be curious, if you think about the values and a two hundred eighty million dollar package investment, making sure that. We're paying full family medical, that was, uh, age. Fifty years of that falls into this as well, and so clearly around that, I'd be interested to see.
Well, definitely, we can bring, bring.
And that, I think, you might be reading also the construction careers pathway policy that Metro.
Yeah.
Council has adopted, and so that is, is providing opportunities for, uh. Uh, underrepresented, uh, workers in the construction, uh, industry, so there will be, there, you know, measure, that is a kind of a policy that Metro has. So any new facility would have to, uh, follow that policy. And have things like apprenticeships, uh, embedded in the construction facilities. Uh, preparing wage, I think it's actually living, uh, not just preparing wage benefits for, uh, workers. Who work in building up these.
Thank you.
And I have, I can do, I know we have maybe like five minutes left, so I could like run through these at Metro's speed, and then I'm happy, we're happy to come back. And answer additional questions, but, um, to get back to the counselor's earlier question, we just put together a couple of slides on budget and fee development. So Metro's budgeting process feels like. Um, this is an outline of, I'm sure you've budgeted on an annual cycle a- as well, so this is the, oh. Oh. So we budget on an annual basis, but the phases listed here, and the solid waste fee setting process runs parallel. To our budget process with the fees adopted in the spring. And I have shared with Michael a, a, the overview sheet that we can provide to you as follow-up. So Metro Council is the approval body for both budget and fees, and starting this year, we mentioned the Regional Waste Advisory Committee. Which has some similarities to the Metro Policy Advisory Committee that advises Metro Council, um, focused on the garbage recycling system. A quick rundown of our fee process is that it is guided by our solid waste fee policy as well, as well as other financial policies at Metro. Like the forty-five day operating reserve requirement. It includes specific criteria that help set the fees and, as I mentioned, the reserve requirements. Then we have the revenue requirement, that's really guided by, um. Uh, what we need based on. Uh, those policies, which is called, followed by a cost analysis to determine the fee per ton. And there's more detail on the worksheet around this, but it's a four-step process. And there's more detail on the worksheet around this, but it's a four-step process. Just like local government set fees for communities, you went through this process and services, Metro needs, Metro set sets fees to regions, for the region and program, programs and services that we offer. Slide, so this is just a quick review of the process that we went through this last year. And around setting budget and fees, we did a number of engagements with our council, we also had a task force that we, that General served on and Beth served on to help make updates to our fee policy, and then we also hosted roundtables with local government and the Regional Waste Advisory Committee. As I mentioned to Mayor Beatty, I think Metro can do a better job in being out here, um, coming out to communities and having conversations around garbage recycling fee setting, I know it's not something that folks, folks generally do on a, a regular basis, and some jurisdictions have staff that are dedicated to working on it and some don't, so we really would like to be part of the conversation and be able to offer more resources on what you're getting for your investment. Next slide, um, this is just a breakdown of the fees, so most often metro fees are referred to as the tipping fee, but this is actually referring to what commercial and haulers pay when they are a customer at one of Metro's stations, so there is a collection of different fees that are imposed on solid waste that are listed here. So as I mentioned, the fees that are only paid by those that go to Metro South Transport Station or Metro Central Transport Station, they pay a tonnage fee for the waste that they're getting rid of, there are minimum, minimum charges, and then transaction fees. In addition to that, we have fees that are paid on every ton of garbage, which is referred to as the primarily the regional system fee, I wanna call attention to, to that, which funds the core services within Waste Prevention and Environmental Services. So that is things like cleanup, dump garbage on public lands, uh, waste production education, our recycling information center, the household hazardous waste facilities that we run, as well as the pop-up collection events, our regional refresh program that provides critical scholarships. So a number of those different services that you see out in the communities, and then there are also our additional fees, the community enhancement fee, so that's paid by host facilities on tons of garbage that go through host facilities that are then given back to those communities for investments, and then the excise tax that funds general fees at Metro that, that's set in Metro code, and as well as the state EQ fee.
So, just to make sure I understand, the column on the left is fees paid at your transfer station?
Mm-hmm.
And the column on the right is fees paid at all, even private transfer stations?
On every ton of garbage, they generally said that the backend was coming out of the transfer station, that that's what is going to landfill or disposal. And so often, these can get conflated.
So your transfer station is paying both columns, people using your transportation are paying both columns, I'm gonna crack up.
Oh, and Marta, just back on the, so the tip fee that is the total of all of that, so when you were saying the, the bond, uh, how that will get passed through to customers, which part of this table will that get tapped on to?
Tonnage fee and regional system.
Tonnage fee and regional, yeah.
You know, the combination, and, you know, that is what Metro Council would assess on, on an annual basis. Wh- what is the proportion of the tonnage fee or is it the regional system fee, depending on the services that are provided?
Gotcha, thank you very much.
So this is just a graph of Metro's fee history, so as I mentioned, you can see from twenty twelve to twenty twenty, fees increased at a rate actually below inflation, and on average, including two years, where the rate actually decreased. In twenty twenty, we made the decision to freeze such fees, so fee adoption was happening right at the moment that the pandemic um, was unfolding, and there was a lot of uncertainty, so fees were not raised. That put us into an operational deficit, and as a result, we've had to make more significant increases to rebuild our reserves and maintain services. If you go to the next slide, these are the adopted fees at the metro level, um, for this fiscal year, and so I just wanna kind of zero in on the, the percent changes, so again, the top three columns are those that are paid by um, customers at the transfer station, and we moved those to cost of service, they previously were not at the cost of service, and Metro cannot charge more than the cost of service, um, for the services that we deliver. When you look at the mixed solid waste fee, so that is the tonnage fee of the transfer stations for, for garbage, and you can see again, that was moved to cost of service, previously it was not, um, and the regional system fee, which again, is those programs that I mentioned, essentially the waste production programs that are provided for, for communities throughout the region, increased by one percent. So we've been very conservative when it comes to our regional programs, understanding the fee sensitivities, and we all experienced this pandemic together, so we have not made any significant changes to our department's budget in terms of those program, programal services, where the fee increase that you're seeing is moving to the cost of service for managing, um, uh, garbage. So, uh, this is just a summary, just for your reference, we have got questions around, well, what are the rates at the other private transfer stations in the region, I apologize, it's a little bit blurry, so this lists the tip fee, um, for each of the different facilities in the region per ton, and then you can also see that transfer stations have a variety of additional transaction fees that they charge on top of that tip fee, depending on what that facility, um, does, so there's a range there, just for your reference. And then this is just a summary, we also have curiosity from some of the councils that we've been visiting around what else did everybody else pay, and again, there are differences, depending on where you're geographically located, on the types of services that, or the class of services that are provided by the local collection companies, as well as differences in the programs that are provided. Some have battery collections, some have low income, raised assistance programs, so there are differences, but this is kind of, I think this this is February, November rate, I think, right?
Uh, September.
September, yeah.
Probably three, as currently, as opposed to not being, uh, federal, I'm quite sure.
So you can kind of get a sense of just, um, the differences in some, like Beaverton had, Beaverton just adopted their fee, so we haven't updated that one yet. So just looking ahead into the next fiscal year, again, we're just starting the budget process now, and the fees will continue to be guided by the solid waste fee policy that was just updated and input from the Regional Waste Advisory Committee. We are working on providing better budget information, um, to cities and counties, and offering opportunities to have local conversations like this, to be able to answer questions. We continue to meet monthly with local government staff, but I recognize not every jurisdiction has local government staff that are able to attend those meetings, and then we do, we will host a spring budget forum to invite local governments to provide input on our proposed program, and I think I have one last slide, we do have nominations open for local governments to submit, um, nominations, we're asking for elected leaders to serve on the Regional Waste Advisory Committee, so if you're interested, I'm happy to provide more information, we are seeking a Plaquemines County representative. Um, so I am happy, I can email Michael the, the nomination form, but it would be great to get additional engagement, um, from you. But understand that you're very busy, and this is a job, probably with another job, so, so. Okay, that's my question.
Yeah, sounds like you might have some interest, so, yeah, send it. Um, it's interesting, cause I looked at our fee rates against other Plaquemines County cities today, and our my, the rate I saw was not as high as the rate you had on there, but. Other questions from Metro folks, or we let them go and move on to, to our franchise agreements?
Oh, I think we have it. Fees. That chart was a little concerning, it stayed so flat for so long and then skyrocketed and continues to jump. Were you guys anticipated continuing, what's the trajectory, to estimate that trajectory continuing that way?
No, if we go back to that, oh, um, no, that's okay, that's okay, you have other things to do. It is, I mean, you saw the larger jump because of the, the, the impact of COVID.
Right.
Like, we were kind of maintaining a steady pace with COVID and then inflation, like inflation hit, I think, private facilities as well as government facilities in, in terms of supplies and services, and in a way that I don't think anybody ever anticipated, based on what our chief financial officer has shared, is that we should based on, if everything holds, we can't predict everything, the financial forecast, is that we should not have um, that level of fee increase looking out, we had shared with council, and I like hesitated to share, had like a four to six percent in- increase, but that absent of any new capital investments. So one of the policies that Metro Council previously had was kind of hold an eight percent benchmark for fee increases over time. We're still using that as a, as a, as a re- like guiding light, or wanting to stay below that uh, moving out to the future, so I, I do think there is the opportunity, and when we look at if the system facilities plan is adopted, that's what we would look towards, maintain below that, um, that threshold over time, to ensure that we have that predictability, both for private facilities, but well, as well as communities, so people are not experiencing these kind of dramatic shifts.
Is that the methodology for the tip fee, so, same way, is eight percent a guideline?
That, that it was, so it is eight percent for the whole is what it had, had been, and so for the regional system fee this year, I think it, yeah, I think we're able to stay under eight percent, but it was the solid waste fee that went up thirteen percent, which made the overall tipping fee go up higher, so they look at it in, in common opinion, if that makes sense, but yeah, the ideal would be that we would stay there.
Uh, it also coincides with the period after the, the great financial crisis, the housing crisis, in which after the recovery, garbage goes up, uh, uh, faster than before. Uh, and so that is, that, that explains also why Metro had the ability to keep those fees, uh, very constant for that time. And then with the COVID crisis, you saw it applying in, you know, which for one or two years, and that's starting to slow down, so, so the amount of garbage that is, uh, generated in the region also is, is the denominator. What affects those, um.
Can Pope Counselor Chris provide this question differently, are any of the buckets that you're seeing not at cost of service right now, or have you done all the catch-up that you might need to do?
Currently, the only item that we don't charge cost of service for is organics, we currently subsidize that, and in part, that is to help support the development of food, the food waste collection programs. Thank you, I'm okay, Carol.
It's, it's a nominal subsidy, that's kind of really, kind of, is not amazing.
Yeah. So with the one, like, so we saw tipping fees one fifty-two, which, what does the dollar fifty to two dollar increase being on that tipping, like, how does that equate, do you have a?
We do have that modeling, and what it would be, I hope, for those fees.
Essentially, we take what the average load of, uh, of, uh, third-hand yard art waste of garbage, right, the, the, the garbage, and if you were to take that to a metro transfer station, you would pay that all tipping. And so that's how, uh, that, that's how the model points in the background, so with the new facilities, uh, new facility investments, that tip fee is going to increase because of the tonnage fees and the regional system fee increases, and that means that that garbage can, where you take us to the metro transportation. So that's, uh, one of my grand misses, that's how, that's how we're handled.
Right, right, okay. It's, I mean, that's, that's as much detail as I can, it's hard to understand anyway, so.
So one other connection point, just to highlight, and oh, thank you for giving us this additional time, is, is around solid waste fee policy, one of the top criteria focused on environment and waste reduction, and in part of that supported that value around moving to cost of service, and that we shouldn't be subsidizing um, the disposable waste, we should, people should be paying for, for the cost of that rather than making, making it easier, and because as a region, we have pay as you throw rate, you're only getting charged for what you put in the garbage can, which is supposed to help right at incentive service cycle, or so in part, that supported that, that change in prioritization of the fee policy criteria of, of us also moving to, uh, to charge in the full cost of service instead of subsidizing.
Sorry, quick question, so, have you seen that in, in charts and stuff? So with the, with the low rate of recycling at the Metro South, were people paying for recycling that wasn't happening?
No, they don't chart, there's no fee for recycling.
There isn't, I don't.
But that, so that takes into account all recovery, so, so I think we're trying to show.
And so were they paying for recovery that, anybody paying for recovery that wasn't happening?
No, but that's, it's the total, uh, inbound tons to the, to the transfer station versus how much is pulled for, uh, uh, organics for composting? Or driveways in the case, uh, of that, where, you know, Carol's facility focuses only on driveways, and they have a sark mine that takes materials out of that inbound waste, Metro South does not have space for that. So, so there is no recovery of driveways, actively currently with the sark mine, like, at a material garbage facility, like, like.
Well, was our, when, when it comes to the organics, is people use the green bill or?
That is getting recovered, yeah, that's separated, we have separate space where that goes.
That doesn't look like Metro South.
Some of it goes to, to residential gas, yeah, some of it goes to Metro South, some of it goes to Metro Central, some of it is taken directly to North Plains, to, to the ecology and composting facility. So it depends on the hauler too, right?
But when he was talking about recovery, he wasn't speaking about organics, he was speaking about wood.
Oh, yeah, he was just, he was just showing the, the driveways.
Yeah, no, like, there really isn't a way of organic.
The report that I received, we charge driveways heavily, oh, okay, and it says for the last twelve months, it's like three point six percent of the sale.
The reason I bring up organics is because we, our, our taxpayers pay a little bit more for that, and so if that's not happening.
Yeah, you wanna make sure it's going, yeah, yeah, we're, yeah.
It's a little, anybody if that's not being done, and our residents are paying more for that, it's a problem.
No, it, it is being recovered, yeah. Especially because we have food scraps, recycling requirement in place.
Is there any accountability for that, either, that, that, to make sure that is being recovered, like, that we clean to our residents?
Well, we can, I mean, you can take a tour of Metro's.
Yeah, please.
South, central.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, it just, it was just really concerning, that whole thing.
But it's definitely going to a separate area of the facility, and so it's dumped onto the on the floor, and then it's taken directly to the composting facility. So, so Metro staff, unless I guess you can follow the drive.
But there, there's a built-in, uh, commercial property not gonna want to dump that as garbage, they're gonna get paid more than dumping it as organics, right, so, and, and our spotters would see if people were, um, dumping loads of organics that were, was not garbage, so I think there's, like, built into the system accountability, uh, around that, but we do track tons, um, by material of, of garbage, organics that come through our facility.
And those have cameras at, at both transfer stations, so sometimes that actually have to use the cameras to make sure that the correct rate was charged to the hauling base and the material that we're delivering, so, so we do have those systems in place.
But I'd love to see you go ahead for our second.
Yeah, that'd be great. Big soup sausage.
I might come along.
Yeah, that would be great. Send it to me.
Well, thank you very much.
Nothing, you.
Detail, I'm sure we will have all other questions.
All spot, that was sort of the spot. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Right, I like Michael's slide. Um, so, turn it on, to Michael for the rest of the.
Thank you, uh. First, I just wanna acknowledge that I'm learning the solid waste as we go, and I wanna thank um, Josh, Chris, and David for helping me as we go, as well as Chris Bell. Um, six months ago, I knew nothing about solid waste, and now I know more than I ever wanted to. Um, and the other thing I wanna acknowledge is in the staff report, um, I kind of led a, I made a mistake in that the past couple of sessions that we've talked about, I explained that there was a decision that the franchise agreement was coming to. And that is not the case, it's a rolling, uh, agreement, and I'm gonna go through the history of it real quick to kind of uh, walk through how we got here. Uh, and then we're going to allow uh each of the waste haulers to come up and speak a couple of minutes about how this agreement is working for them. And then I'm hoping that we can have kind of a conversation on if there's areas that we can tweak the agreement or if there's changes that we all want to make going forward. Make it work better for everybody. Uh, the big key things is customer service, I think is kind of everybody's uh big topic. So with that, um, I kind of went through and gave a, or I'm giving a history of the franchise agreement. It started in nineteen ninety-three with city code thirteen twenty-four. Uh, I think that's the first time the city kind of looked at uh solid waste agreements. In two thousand and five, there was a big overhaul of it to amend the code. The, the big highlights that came out of that, the desires were ensuring safe, economical and comprehensive solid waste services. Ensuring service rates and charges that are just and reasonable to, to provide the public service. So those are the waste uh rates that we set every year with Chris Bell. Um prohibiting rate preferences and other discriminatory practices. And providing technological and economical feasibility, uh resource recovery by and through franchising. I think that's kind of economics of scale that everybody is kind of um trying to, as we adapt to new technologies and new ways. Kind of everybody as a group is striving to make the process better. Um, in two thousand and fifteen. There was, as the end of the previous agreement, that was a ten-year agreement came. There was a new discussion that uh council reviewed and discussed with a, and a fifth, with a new change to that. The change was to add a ten-year rolling franchise agreement, which we currently have now. So the agreement that we're coming, coming up to is on a rolling ten-year uh basis. Um, from my limited uh. Search of this, this is something still, this is similar language that is in agreement in other jurisdictions. And Josh and David can talk about that. So it's not unique to Milwaukee. Uh, but we evaluate the rates on an annual basis. And we have in there too that we do a five-year comprehensive review. I think that's just to make sure that customer service and everything, all the standards that we want from the franchises are uh being met.
But have we ever done that? I've never seen it in my ten.
I don't think we've.
I think this counts as my one.
I'm hoping that this is the first to start that off.
Yeah, you should have had one in twenty twenty and then you should have had, and then.
Um, and Josh and David can speak more to this, but the rolling franchise uh agreement gives stability to the franchisers and the haulers. The main capital investments in trucks, containers, that if they're putting out that investment, that there's going to be kind of a payoff period. So that they're able to recover those costs. So with that, um, I'd like to first uh introduce Josh Brown and Chris Wright. They're with Waste Connections and uh I've been meeting with them. I met with them last week and we kind of prepped on. Kind of what you, I think you guys are looking for. So they're going to give uh a little uh talk about. All right, just come up.
Thank you for having us again. Uh, talk back to follow after Metro and all of that excitement and. Challenging environment that, that we're all in with Metro. So appreciate you walking through that. Um, I wanted to thank Michael and Emma, you know, working through this. Um, there are a lot of components to the solid waste recycling system that. Are challenging for newcomers to understand. So it's been good to build that relationship and work together. So I wanted to, to talk about that. Um, you know, he talked a little bit about the ten-year rolling franchise. As you mentioned, they are um very common in the state of Oregon. We have quite a few of them that are in our organization where it is that ten-year rolling. Um, and we look at that from a long-term planning standpoint and investments in the containers, investments in trucks. Uh, investments in the facilities as well as future investments that align with Metro and some of the, the regional solid waste holes. Um, so you know, and, and our business, as mentioned, that's a very common practice with our, with our industry. Um, it is easy to miss, I guess misunderstand when the initial term was twenty fifteen ending in twenty twenty-five. So that renewal happens every January one, um, as we're, we're talking about today. Um, you know, a couple of things on the franchise system I, I'd like to point out. Uh, Michael did talk about a little bit of it, but um, you know, the franchise system provides a tremendous amount of stability for the community. Stabilized rates that the councils and the, the city councils as well as county commissions have a lot of control. Um, and we are regulated in a way that holds us accountable. There was a lot of talk about accountability. Um, which I feel is one of the backbones of the franchise system. It does allow the cities and community, cities and counties to hold us accountable to all the regulations and rules uh around the business. Um, you know, the franchise system does provide equitable rates. Um, it offers the same services to all of the community residents within those jurisdictions. As well as, um, again, kind of back to that accountability on the hauler level, as well as the, the local jurisdictions. You know, I, I, there was a lot of discussion about a lot of things with Metro. So my apologies on which, which way you go here. Um, I wanted to touch on customer service. I think Michael mentioned that. Um, that is something our company does a little bit differently than other companies in the market. Uh, we pride our customer service from a local standpoint. We have local customer service reps that work in our office. Uh, that take those calls every single day. Um, we work towards very low old times and actually talking to someone on the phone locally that, that knows a local area. Uh, sometimes different companies have different structures on that, uh, which can be challenging when you have multiple companies in the same jurisdiction. Um, we certainly aren't perfect on customer service and I think we can always look to improve those initiatives. And provide a better experience for the customers as well as the city serving. Uh, but I didn't want to mention that. See, I think, what else can I quickly talk about? I don't want to take up too much time as we have other guests in the room. Um, there was a discussion that Council Matthew brought up, uh, as well as Martha's presentation. Uh, food in the compost bins. And I wanted to touch on that because I think your statement at the last work session. Is probably reflective of a lot, of a lot of the community that just does not understand how the program works or did even or may not be able to put food scraps in a garbage bin. And I think that kind of comes back to us as a company, as well as working with the local jurisdictions to educate the customers. Educate the community on what that looks like on sustainability efforts and what kind of uh impact that has. While it is a little bit more money, um, I did want to state that as we talk about that, I think going backwards and removing something from a program. Would be very difficult um from a, a just human, I guess, process, right? A lot of people in the community are accustomed to it. And pulling that out might be a challenge, but I wanted to just kind of quickly touch on that. We did discuss uh internally in our, in our company. Better stickers on containers or re-stickering containers or ordering carts as we replace them with more educational material. Uh, facing the consumer as well as mailers or email alerts or blasts, uh email blasts, those types of things. It is common where. You know, the city of Milwaukee, the city of West Lynn, a lot of these jurisdictions have different programs. So it can be very confusing with customers, especially if you move in between different cities and all of a sudden have a different program. So we experienced that in some of the, the outer line areas where people move from Fort One to, to Black Hills County. And don't have that same service level. So it can be kind of confusing. So I thought I'd at least briefly touch on that. Um, I kind of close with, you know, I, I appreciate Michael talking about the franchise and terms. We value ourselves in the long-term partnerships and relationships with our cities. Uh, Chris and myself are new to the Milwaukee uh franchise because our company acquired. Uh, Kew Way's two home to be disposal prior to us taking over. So. Um, but we've both been in this business a long time, um, and dogging these relationships. So as we move forward with discussions around the franchise agreement. If there are needs, wants of the community, of the council, um, changes, improvements. We're your partners and willing to do that. And look at all avenues that best serve the community. So. I have talked broadly as long as Mark said, no, that's not. But I think I'll, I'll wrap it up there. I just asked question if you have any of us. So thank you.
Um, I also wanted to invite Dave Huber to the table who's the waste management. Can you also get some comments?
I'm going down. Down there to that end.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Dave Huber. I am WM's Public Cycling Manager. So I oversee, excuse me, all of our contracts. Uh, al- almost in the entire state of Oregon, but those contracts are primarily from the Portland Metro Department of the Region. And uh, we're happy to be here uh in the city of Milwaukee. I certainly don't want to be redundant or copy, uh, you know, any, anything that Josh had to say, but. Um, uh, and let me introduce Mike Jeffries too.
Or I can introduce myself. I'm Mike Jeffries. Um, I'm, I've worked for Waste Management for twenty-seven years. My, my formal title, my title is the pricing director for the Pacific Northwest. And over the last twenty-five years, I've uh filled out um the detailed cost report, worked quite a bit with Chris Bell. Chris Bell actually used to be one of my assistant controllers twenty years ago. So very familiar with Chris and his work. And uh, the rate making process here in Milwaukee, Clockwas County, Gresham, Portland, so forth. Development of many different programs throughout the years. And uh, yeah, just here to help answer any questions you may have in that process. And understanding the differences in rates that we have here in Milwaukee versus other communities.
Uh, one thing I, I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank uh, I worked with Michael uh past few months uh on some of the rates. And uh, ensuring that the rates were uh, you know, set uh correctly on the rate increase uh recently. But then also uh revealing that, yeah, that the, the franchise terms and as Josh men- mentioned. Uh, you know, that's not uncommon. Uh, all of our uh franchise agreements are here in Oregon are, are similar. Uh, some of the terms might be a little different, but uh, uh, there are quite a few of them that are uh, you know, rolling ten-year contracts. And, and again, uh, as Josh mentioned, there is, there is a reason for that. Uh, we, we need to invest in our, our, well, most importantly, we need to invest in our people. And those are, that's our biggest asset are our employees. And we want to make sure that we invest in our people. But then also our trucks, when our trucks are, you know, uh, they cost what? Close to five hundred thousand dollars now for a, for a vehicle. Uh, in our equipment. So having that assurance uh over a, a long term. Uh, gives us a surety that we continue to invest in, in our equipment and, and people and the above. So. Uh, there's a lot of values uh to the franchise system, which I could, you know, the, the, the rates are standardized. Uh, there's regulatory oversight, uh, like we've talked about the rate review over here. The environmental impact. I mean, it's, it's good for the environment to have a regulated franchise system like we do. And uh, of course, there's benefits with, with uh, the locations like Milwaukee with uh, uh, you know. Not as much impact to local traffic, that kind of thing with a franchise system, the way we have it set up. So. Uh. You know, uh, something else, you know, uh, that I just worked with Michael recently on was, uh, we did speak about some of the things, you know, with this franchise. Uh, the five-year re- five-year kind of review period that was, was missed, it looks like back in twenty twenty. Uh, but you know, we're certainly more than happy to work with uh the city on uh opportunities. If there's ideas, uh, changes, enhancements. I know one, one particular thing that we, we, uh, waste management, we just uh enhanced was our website uh for the city of Milwaukee. So customers uh can go to it, uh, if they have a missed pickup, if there's a broken cart. Uh, they can go to the website and submit an online uh request to get that fixed. Uh, so it's, it's just trying to add that new technology to the system. So uh, community members can easily, you know, uh, reach out and get those type of things. Or uh, you know, might, might happen infrequently, taking care of that, staying put there. And we, we continue to, you know, look, look for opportunities, uh, and ways to improve as well. So. Does that, Mike? Um, Mike, do you have anything to add?
Uh, you know, the other thing too that we can provide in the city of Milwaukee is the annual cleanup. And that's also a hard rate. So when you're looking at your rate compared to other jurisdictions, you know, there's a cost factor to do that cleanup. And you know, that's not provided in cities like uh, the city of Portland, for example. They don't have a annual cleanup where you have. Uh, we can pick up some things of that nature. So those are some enhancements that I see that the city of Milwaukee has over some other jurisdictions.
There's a lot of cities that are jealous of the city of Milwaukee.
Well, I, I've even heard that Metro is thinking of making bulky waste, a bulky waste cleanup, like uh, something that all the jurisdictions have to.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing how much material we can pick up in that fifteen-week period here in the city of Milwaukee, you know?
Yeah, it's a popular.
It's amazing the amount of things that are reused. Because every time I put something out, it's never picked up.
Which I'm all for.
Uh, screamed or.
One, one, one thing I, I would also like to uh offer, uh, I know, uh, Bartan offered a tour. Uh, we have our Twalton Valley Waste Recovery Facility. It's a dry waste facility. We'll get it in Hillsborough. I would welcome all of you to uh come out, take a tour. Um, I can put the tour guide hat on. Uh, it was just certified as a, with the Recycling Certification Institute. Uh, and uh, it is a certified site. Uh, the recovery rate is a great recovery rate. Now, it might not look the same as others because uh, we take all types of waste there. So there's, we're not comparing apples to apples. If you look at some other uh dry waste facilities. But it's an excellent facility and I would love to have all of you come out and take a look at it and see how it, how it's uh, how it runs.
And I think Mr. Uh, Terrell, his, his company has also offered us tours. So we have many offers for um.
Guess we're going to be on the road and they need a bus.
Um, so I get a bunch of.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could cut in real quick too. Uh, at this point, we were going to offer open.
Oh, okay.
Public comment.
Okay.
If, um, Terrell, would you like to come speak?
If you're okay with that, yeah.
If you're okay with that.
Okay, I mean, I, okay.
And we'll try and condense it down to a couple minutes. And I, only I'm prepared, but um, thank you.
So actually, the Recycling Certification Institute um judges all facilities on the exact same basis. And um. The facilities, the two certified facilities in this region accept the same exact kinds of waste. And so it is an apples-to-apples comparison. Um, and one is over fifty percent recovery, one's a point two. So. It was just for clarification. Um, the franchise system for residential and front load. Having a single operator in an area makes all sense in the world. Uh. Stops congestion, inefficiencies, uh, controlled cost, provides a uniformity of service. Nobody wants three garbage trucks going down their street at three different days of the week. And I remember when I lived on Forty Second Street in Hollywood, when that happened. Um. Similar, I think that uh, front load, it's on the route, multiple containers picked up by one truck. But then you get to drop boxes. And drop boxes. The truck leaves every box that leaves the area. And whether that truck or another truck comes back, it.
And whether that truck or another truck comes back, it doesn't really affect congestion or things like that. And what has happened is that drop boxes are not a homogeneous product. The needs are different for every box, every location, service level, service frequency, one time, you name it. And, you know, when, when you pick up garbage from your house, it all goes to the landfill. There's no sorting. When you pick up the, um, the curbside recycling, it goes to one of the very few facilities in this area, all of which have basically the same recovery rate. Very, very close to each other. But when you pick up that drop box, it can have a recovery rate from 3% to over 50%, depending on where it goes. What has been happening in the region is, is that for various internalization reasons, maybe franchisees halted their own facilities or halted facilities where they know that the majority of that waste will go to their landfill because of low recovery rate. And in fact, um, yesterday, I lived yourself here in Oak Grove and I called a hauler. And I was on hold and then it said, well, you can do this online. So I tried to do it online and it said, no call, no. So anyways, after 25 minutes, I got hewn, okay? And I tried to set up like I was gonna order a 30-yard drop box. And I found out that that 30-yard drop box could go to Metro South. I said, no, what if I wanted to go somewhere else? Well, it could go trapped in. Well, what if I want to go somewhere else? No. The answer was, no, that is not available. Period. Non-negotiable. And the next thing was, I said, well, if I went this box tomorrow, when can I have it? Seven days. Okay, so with a choice, regulated competition, that is franchise, where the rates are regulated, where everybody gets the same rate, they, people can have choice, competition will allow for better service. And you can choose your recycling. Because with competition, you're, you're, you're going, the internalization of multi-level, vertically operated national companies goes away. Also, there is, there are no minority participation in this industry in franchising, anywhere in the metropolitan area. And so I, I think that don't take away, add, add a choice, add some limited competition. And watch, don't skip a matter.
Thank you.
Do you want to discuss about?
I'm Beth Artest Duncan. I am the Regional Director with Oregon Recyclings and Recycling Association. And tonight, anything I say will not represent anyone from ORA, the statewide association. I've done really just work in the Portland metro area. And, um, I was taking some notes. Um, I, obviously, our members here are, you know, the gentlemen you see, um, right here with, associated with Waste Connections and WM. Uh, we work very closely. Uh, Terrell and I have sat on a number of committees together. And obviously, Marta and Metro staff and I work closely together. Um, the, the main thing I want to talk about, and Terrell made some, some interesting points about routes and drop box. But, um, I think it's important to look at, when you have a franchise, you do set the rates. Where things are taken under the franchise system, they do, and Metro's data has shown this, that as the franchisees operate, they do go to the nearest place. They have a study and we all agreed, all the transfer station owners and, and Metro staff agreed that, um, the franchise system really compels the participants to operate as efficient, efficiently as possible. So I wanted to leave that note. And also, one thing that, um, we could be concerned about is, I think it's not just apples-to-apples, looking at a dry waste facility and a dry waste facility and how they take it. But also, who are you servicing? What is in that drop box? If it's from a restaurant, there's gonna be, you know, hopefully it'll all be food waste now and it'll go there, but.
Is that qualified as dry waste?
No, no, it would not. So we are to look at somewhere, um, in the franchises though, they serve everyone, all drop boxes, wet, dry, waste. If someone comes in and takes just construction or just other, it, it, it could disrupt the system. And I think, um, it was mentioned before that when you have an increase, there's an additional impact that folks see down the line. I, I think that that would be a concern here with this other change. And, um, having someone coming in and taking a certain type of consumer or customer would impact the system. So that's just a concern.
So kind of with that, I prep for the last slide, which is kind of.
Well, so before we get to that, I have some stuff too, and I think those are great questions. I don't think we need all these folks at the table while we're having that discussion. Um, so thank you guys for your experience. I do think those are the questions, and I don't think we probably should have done that in the first place. Um, but I did, I did, well, I spent several hours today thinking through other cities in Clarkus County. So I wanted to give a little bit of background, um, for what I found. Uh, most of the cities do have some kind of rolling term, but it's not ten years. It's seven and eight years typically, not ten. Um, Lake Oswego has a fixed tenure contract. It's not a rolling term. Um, a lot of the cities have one hauler. Westland has its own hauler. Corby City has its own hauler. Couple of cities use, uh, Republic, I think Buck Wilsonville and, um, Lake Oswego use Republic, which is one of the haulers here, um, but they have a one hauler for the city. Um, Happy Valley lets the county do it. Happy Valley and the, uh, the county sets the rates for Happy Valley. Um, those were things I learned. I thought most interesting thing here about customer service and and sort of checking in the fact that we haven't had an assessment of any of that, um, is Lake Oswego does establish a committee, does a five-year check-in, does a citizen, does a residence, um, survey, it has a committee, kind of looks at it after five years. I, I don't think that was probably what was intended in our franchise, um, uh, statute, but it hasn't, but it hasn't happened. Um, and I don't want to get into rates too much because we set our rates and we'll do it again next year. Um, but I did look at the rates in the cities in urbanized, um, in urbanized, uh, Clarkus County, and our rates are kind of in the middle. Um, the, uh, the thing I think was interesting is Lake Oswego is one of the other cities that does do the, um, uh, food waste. And they made a conscious effort. I actually checked in with Mayor Buck about this. Uh, because I also noticed that their rates for their smaller, those smaller cans, the 20-gallon cans, are quite low, lower than ours. Um, the rate for the 35-gallon can is about what ours is. But then their rate for the, uh, larger cans is much higher. They made those rates much higher to sort of incentivize people to use smaller cans. Um, and to get more into, you know, put their food waste into the, into the yard debris and all of that kind of stuff. So I do think there are some policy things we might want to look at ahead of rate setting next year. Um, okay. So I guess that was one of the things I wanted to share from my view of research.
And you said that our weight's right in the middle. Is that the numbers that you're wearing, like you got it stuck in there? Or is that they probably incorporating the numbers that were shared?
No, it was not. Because our number from our, the, uh, they had a $40, uh, number for our 35-gallon can. And our B schedule says 38.20. That's what did our, our schedule. So I'm not quite sure. And, you know, and, you know, our all cities keeping their latest numbers up to date, you know, could the numbers be a bit, or changing high? I mean, you know, who knows? Um, because some of them are setting, uh, some of them seem to set their rates starting at, uh, calendar year, fiscal year, et cetera. Not, there's no consistency. It's not going. Yes. But, um, you know, I mean, I can, I could share what I found on part, but, you know, we're lower than you. Some and we're higher than others. So, yeah, we're just kind of.
I don't know. So, um, before we get into this, uh, this, uh, questions up here, I just had a couple of observations and, um, you know, I am all for providing the haulers stability because I think it's in their benefit and our benefit that they can best modernize and that kind of thing. But I, I, I just really don't understand ten years because I had quite a bit of experience in, in, uh, investments in the corporate world. Typically, the ROIs on major capital improvements, you pay those off in less than five years. It's typically three years. So I'm asking myself, ten years? This sounds like a big commitment. Um, the other thing I will say is, uh, I'll jump to the, uh, issue of the food waste and into the yard clippings and that kind of thing. And so I was the one who was surprised. Uh, and I would agree that if you change that, that would be, uh, that would be a big change for people because people are just creatures of habit, you know? But it doesn't mean that you couldn't do it. And it's same to life. The price differential, as I remember it, I don't remember the exact dollars and cents, it's pretty substantial.
Well, Michael's stat report this week says a dollar per month. But I would have sworn that Chris told us 30 cents or 35.
That was an estimate. I was hoping that Josh or Jake could chime in on what the actual estimate is.
Um, it might, it might be a wee little.
Yeah, I would say if you were to take, uh, Clarkus County's rates compared to Milwaukee's, the two things that separate those two rates is basically the cleanup event and the organics, uh, with the, with the yard debris. So those are the two components that are, and I believe the difference in rates is probably like less than $2. And so of that $2, I believe there's probably like 45 cents that's associated with the cleanup event on an annual basis. And then the difference would be associated with additional charge associated with organics. Because really, the collection truck is picking it up regardless if it has yard debris or, or yard debris or organics. The difference is the tipping rate, the difference associated with that, taking that to Metro South. And that's what the true difference is.
Actually, our rate is lower than the council's rate.
The.
Ever so slightly, but, uh, that's what I found online today. Our rate was, it's, uh.
I, you know, I just wanted to be careful, making sure you're comparing the, the latest rates because, and then also the county has three different rates. They have the urban, rural, distant rural.
Yeah, no, I use their urban.
So, okay.
I use their.
I just want to bring attention to that, um, the latest rate schedule, there's a update coming to council next week for consent. Uh, I was working with Chris Bell, who unfortunately had kind of an accident, so he was offline for a little bit. A lot of the little rates that we were working through got delayed through that process. He's since given them to me and I've worked with both the haulers to update their rates. So what's on the web, there's a new version coming to you next week.
We just set those fees in the summer.
You did set the fees, but those were, those were the bigger fees. There's a kind of a little, uh, there were things that weren't identified, smaller fees that we were clarifying on it. So it's not a big overhaul. It's just a small, uh, smaller.
The, the 32-gallon can rate won't change. The, all the big, big fees, these were sort of further down the schedule that just didn't get from Chris Bell's before.
But not the red, not the.
Not the main residential. And Mayor, I'd love to follow up with you afterwards because I'm seeing on our latest fee schedule that it is $40.43. So I just want to make sure what, 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 what document you found. We may just have some people left following up. For 32 gallons?
32.
Comments, questions before we launch into?
Yeah, about the, the rolling and things like that. So if it's a rolling effect, what does that mean? Is there, is there anything built into that? Is there supposed to be, to where council has some possibility to handle that? Well, it tends to that goes into.
Well, I mean, we need our lawyer here. I don't want to answer that question. But my read of it was pretty lousy for the city, to be honest, I think. Um, I felt like it was, uh, hard to, I mean, it is an ordinance. It's our ordinance. So presumably, we can amend an ordinance. So we could put in some new requirements. Uh, what that means vis a vis their 10-year agreement though, I don't know.
Yeah, I would say I don't, Justin would kill me if I was trying to represent his legal opinion without him in the room. But we had some good talks with him yesterday. Um, I think there's, there's two matters here. There's the code. And you guys can update your code. So you could replace or update chapter 13.24. But what that code says is every January 1st, we renew a contract with these guy. And that contract was for 10 years. So what I, what our understanding is, is January 1st of this year, they have another 10-year contract. And I don't think changing the code annuls that contract. So I think any decision you make now, um, would kind of be instated 10 years from January 1st, 2024 because of the contractual obligation. That is our understanding as of today. Um, we can ask Justin, or this is a study session to learn. We admit it, we are still definitely learning here. If you'd like to ask Justin to do a deeper sort of legal investigation in that, that's something we can definitely go into.
So are you saying every year it extends?
Uh, that is how the code was written. The code adopted by council in 2015 says that every year on January 1st, a new 10-year agreement is, is committed to with the franchisees. It does talk about council being able to terminate a contract. And it says, once you, once you say that, it'll terminate 10 years from the last renewal day.
So it says like by December 1st, we have to give notice of our intent to terminate. And then it then terminates 10 years later. I personally, I think we should give notice so that we can revisit the whole code and see what we want to do. Um, it's, it's a crazy system. I mean, I get the giving them some assurance, but 10 years is crazy for a system.
10 years to get out of there, I mean.
Yeah.
Council.
Yeah, well, it'll be a completely different council, but I've been looking out for future councils and future residents. It seems like revisiting. I mean, even to revisit, I mean, maybe you end up with a, I, yeah, anyway.
We can also circulate, if it would be helpful, the analysis that was done in 2015 that informed that council's decision to go with this, just as you were kind of considering options for that to pass through. We'll circulate that stat report.
Great. And I would like to know more about Lake Oswego. I'd like you to get us some, uh, on how they don't have a rolling. How that's working.
So if, if I could add one thing, I, I am concerned about the lack of flexibility as you are and, and this voice. Uh, but I've also, help folks back here. I'm not dissatisfied with the service, but I'm just concerned about the lack of flexibility in sort of the long term. That's my concern. That's my.
Well, I don't think we know what our community feels about.
We don't.
I think it complains about the service.
I don't, okay. Mine, mine is, mine is me.
Um, so, I mean, we haven't polled, right? I don't know if they polled. If they polled, I, I invite them to send us the, the results of their polling. But, um, we haven't, that's a city poll.
In my experience, I've had some people reach out to me in the last six months. In my experience, I've had some people reach out to me in the last six months and as I've done that. I've directed it to Josh, to David, and I don't hear anything, so I'm assuming no news is good news and that they followed up with this. Uh, if it kind of gets to me or, or the mayor, I think has maybe forwarded some to him, to me. You know, I try and get it to them and, and then I, I don't hear anything else, so I'm assuming that's good. But if, if there is feedback, we're open to hearing.
I've heard a few things that I just wanna make sure we recap as action items for staff. So we'll get more information from like us, we go on how their uh non-rolling contract is working for them. We'll circulate the staff reports and analysis that was done in twenty fifteen and like the passage of the current code and adoption of the franchise system. Um, I think I'm hearing you'd like me to ask our city attorney to also dig in and provide some amount.
Well, I mean, I don't think we'd even a huge memo or anything, like just to confirm where our sort of house to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like there's no termination rate, it's crazy.
And then to this point of the five year analysis that didn't happen five years ago, so we're coming up then on another five years in twenty twenty five. Um, also, this is a study session, you're not like supposed to go back in direction, but, but uh, I, I think what I'm hearing is general kind of interest in doing a, a more robust analysis of how the system is working and how the community is feeling about it to inform sort of your next steps.
One other point is, is someone in the city renewing the annual rolling contract?
Because of how the contract is written.
Is it just, is, is it just happened if we don't?
I think it just happens, it's, and to be honest, and again, to, 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 to own that we gave you some incorrect information in our last work session. We were under the assumption, we adopted this in twenty fifteen, it says in the first, whereas ten year term, our minds were thinking ten year term, that's March of twenty twenty five. It wasn't until we dug deeper into that, dug deeper into their various, be it resolves and the code, that we understood the role and nature of this. But yeah, I understand, my understanding, Robert, is our, our contract team doesn't do anything with it, it rolls forward, the terms roll forward on June fir- Ju- Jan- January first, if we don't.
Did you wanna go through the questions or do you wanna just come back and?
Oh, I think those were sort of prompts for discussion, you know, as you guys kind of process the information you heard tonight. Um, the, you know, various perspectives you heard, I think this will help us too, I think what we'd like to hear is what's on your mind? So that as we craft future agenda talk conversations about this, potentially that larger assessment that we're responding to what you do here for constituents or what you are interested in examining as you think about the future of the businesses. So we, they're not only questions per se, they're, they're topics that we know have come up and, and wanna make sure if you've got. Feedback you'd like to give us or, or questions we'd like us to chew on, we can.
Well, I mean, I guess it would be nice to have a little more. Understanding of the, what the cost of the composting and yard debris bins is, but I'm actually, personally, I'm not inclined. Absolutely isn't that, I think. Uh, we want to encourage more people to do it, I like the suggestion of Mr. Brown that we do more to give a K people's ability to do it, and then hopefully families can start downsizing into smaller containers, you know? Um, so, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know. Uh, I mean.
I would like to encourage the composting, you know, I mean, I, I have, we have a bigger bin. So paying more for it, especially paid, but it'd be great to get it, so I always wondered how we have so much trash. I'm just like, we gotta like reduce, you know, keep talking about it, so maybe that's a good way. To get people to, to incentivize, especially with our climate goals, I think we're moving. There's, there's a benefit to it, again, it would be, be interesting to see the, the cost.
Well, I'm gonna do any kind of. Survey on. Satisfaction, that would be a question as well, so would you be, would Patty, Patty view this trade off? But I think that there is a couple of opponents to add because, you know, as, as I went through this, I said, I could probably reduce the size of one of my bins if I start. Putting the food waste, which is a little bit costly.
So. You don't have any, yeah, and you don't have yard debris either.
No yard debris, and you'd like to borrow a green bin.
This one, no. Yeah, you might wanna go, wanna put one of those.
Well, that's one.
Yeah.
Well, we got you, so let's talk after.
Uh, what would it entail to put something together on the aviational monkey around that's just to sort of test the waters around? You know, how people use their current trash, uh, what's up and what they lo- what they like about it, what they don't like about it, it's like that. I mean, is that really staff intensive?
Um, no, I mean, I think, I think what I wanna do is kind of right scale what this assessment looks like so that, because we can do that. We can also in our next community survey and do statistically valid piece include three or four questions about solid waste. So, um, what I'd kind of like to do is sort of take away the feedback from this. And put together maybe a proposal for what that five year assessment would look like and maybe some options for it, bring that back to the council. Um, to kind of assess where we go forward, Engage is a great tool, it's something we could deploy very quickly. I just wanna kind of think about is, is, would you like us to do that, sort of the quick and dirty, get some data for you before the end of the year? Or do you want us to do a committee and uh statistically validate a collection effort, sort of where within that?
Well, I mean, I think I probably defer to you on whether something is in, included in the community survey. Because what I really like about that is our ability to tell us things longitudinally. And maybe this year is when we start looking at our, you know, solid waste agreement longitudinally.
Sure.
Uh, or our larger set of values around uh waste reduction as it's tied to a climate.
Sure.
So, uh, yeah, something along that, I was just thinking about engage in terms of like, um, some of the, um. I don't know, uh, some of the things that I think people agree with, you know, in terms of Milwaukee values.
Yeah.
Where reuse and.
Yeah.
And recycling and again, I know that there's a lot of frustration about our ability to, you know, provide access to recycling for discarded styrofoam. It's been a struggle to kind of get that, you know, to be more sustainable. Um, I think we have a box that's right next to, you know, our like trash sort of at, at home. Uh, you know, that we put all of the like number five plastics into, the bread ties, things like that. But then we have to take those to the James recycling events, um, or the sustainability fair, you know, where James recycling is present. So I think that there may be some folks that have that sort of like disjointed system at home. Uh, and might be interested in, you know. Some, some sort of a system enhancement, I don't know what that would look like. Um, but it seems like it would tie into the, the conversation about metros.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I do see some great potential when metros drop off facilities happen.
As, let me also talk to Katie, um, the materials management side of our climate action plan is frankly a piece that I know we haven't put as much attention on. And so I'd like to kind of talk to them about their, their next steps in that area and. I, 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 the more I think about it, I do like this idea, Engage is a good platform for this kind of thing of like just taking the temperature of. What maybe do we not know was on the minds of people um in the community about this, so let me, let me noodle on that more and bring back a proposal.
Well, one of the, one of the things too, I think you're bringing that up. Um. I'm really curious, speaking of our climate goals, right? You know, toward what we, what we say, really putting stuff to action. I'm really concerned with the dry waste and the lack, the, the really low numbers of reuse, it's really concerning to me. Is there any, and I think I brought something up in our original discussion initially back in July, about language then. Wire that, that dry waste or that construction waste, whatever it is, goes to the highest of reuse uh transportation. Uh, for the recycling because again, you know, we're gonna tout that we're climate. We, you know, we have a climate action level, we're gonna send waste to a place that gets more percent. You know, it's just, it's just to something, yeah, it's, it's just, it's hypocritical, really, so I mean, if there's any way to do language that stipulates that all there's have to take it to. Your highest rate of what region.
Well, I was just gonna say, so going to that bullet up there about Dropbox and recycling, I think there's two questions, one is a legal. Question, a legal question for Justin about what we can do and when it would take effect if we were to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And the second is sort of a financial question about what it would, you know, I mean, it obviously wouldn't happen before. Uh, we've, we've set fees for this year, but if we were to do that, how would it change the rate calculation in future years? How would it change rate calculation for the existing haulers? Um, how much of what they, how much of their business in Milwaukee is Dropbox business, I guess? Yeah.
Okay, so some legal and some financial modeling, I think that's the question first before it's, could we, you know, should we add language? Just to really get that, that data to inform what you.
Um, other thoughts, other questions?
Okay, so here's what I would propose then, is that we've got, we've got a lot of action items. I'm gonna look at our forecaster and try to find us, um, probably a work session to bring some of these things back. Um, uh, and, but I'll do that prior to, I'll probably do that prior to the end of the year, wishful thinking. I'm gonna look and see what I can do, but I just, knowing this, what you've expressed, Mayor, about.
Well, and I have to say, I mean, yeah, I was like, let's give notice, let's give notice of December, I mean, I feel like, you know. One more year, it's gonna make such a difference when you've got ten years. Um, but I do feel like, you know, this needs some attention, yeah, but whether it has to happen, I check or not, it's not something.
Okay, we'll see what we can make happen with scheduling magic and legal and financial analysis. You just get more time talking about trash. Trash.
Uh, talking trash.
Trash talking. Would it be helpful then, again, that we're talking about policy lanes and certain things like that to identify who has a lead on trash? Who's trash, women in the trash lane? I, I gotta say, Councilor Bobby, you, you seem to be chomping at the trash bit earlier, so you would like to be the trash lane leader.
Oscar the Gruff.
Oscar for having. That sounds great, okay, I'll equip Oscar.
I am, I did, I wanna say that like on the reuse and recycle side of things, I'm really interested in having collaborative conversation about that. Um, and so not interested in a new lane, just, I just wanna say.
Like, I might, might dip in the trash pool, let her come out.
If you're doing the trash show. Trash.
Okay. Think we can let our, our wonderful guests go.
Yeah, we're gonna go on.
Face trash people.
Could get a better couple. It's, it's you as well. Maybe it's just my.
We do have, we do have our guests. There are two words in the. We have council reports and then we have a percentage.
Yes.
So council reports, let me.
I'm ready.
You're ready, go.
Okay, so, um, um, the uh. Watershed Council uh strategic plan, I'll try to get through this going from Ken, it's very, it was actually a very good process. They had a, you know, they had a consultant come in to lead the discussion, the whole board. Uh, we spent like a whole day with the board, a lot of brainstorming and that kind of thing. And basically, you know, a number of themes came out of that and then the executive committee went out and actually wrote the strategic plan, probably, I think it took them a weekend. Uh, but basically they started with these assumptions that obviously we have a growing population which presents a lot of challenges to the watershed. And uh, that brings hardscaping, you know, to the, to the county. Uh, that again leads to stormwater management issues that impacts, uh, you know, the, the healthy streams. And of course, climate change being wetter wets and drier drys, you know, the wetter wets uh presents uh. Bank erosions that creates problems and, you know, the drier drys, less shade, um, less uh. Hospital habitat for the, for the, you know, wildlife. And then there's just structural integrity because the people who were most affected by this are. Folks who suffer most because of the, you know, the, the heat and the. Issues and, you know, and the flooding. Uh. Contrary to popular belief, uh, the watershed council is not all about Kellogg, it's actually four, four, it's, it's Kellogg, Mount, Mount Scott. Uh, uh, Renaissance River Forest and the moment, uh. Change coming with the confluence uh that are being worked on by this watershed council. So, um. A couple of issues uh that the, uh, that are important to the watershed council is that, uh, you know, the water, the, the government partners. And they felt like that there's at least two uh government entities that have not been as engaged as we want them to be in this. Really happy valley and, and, um, and glass, now that they have, they, we have a, a representation for both of those at the watershed council. So we hope that that is on a good path. Um, um, so, um. They wanna, and, and you know, broaden the, the community understanding of what's happening when you have these lower temperature waters. Uh, and this rapid water level changes that's causing the erosion and that kind of thing, it's impacting the water itself. One of the things that they did, and I'm skipping around a little bit here, is they, you know, they had one of these mission statements that was. Five months long or whatever it was, and they sort of said, we gotta get this down so that we can actually remember it and, and spit it back out. And these various out of these issues, and so they have a new mission statement that is, um, to make our watersheds great places for fish, wildlife and people, that's it. Okay, so that's probably a pretty good one for steer, okay? Um, so, uh, getting into the more strategic plan, uh, they obviously want to complete the big current project, Kellogg Free. Uh, they want more community engagement, more collaborative relationships, especially on the, uh, uh, with the governments. Um, they're really interested in getting some traction on stormwater. And I think the best way to approach that is to have a pilot project or a number of pilot projects, so that they can publicize the results of that. And tell us what's really happening with the stormwater going to the watersheds. Um, and, um.
Were they look, I mean, were they, have they identified ones and are they looking at Milwaukee or are they talking?
They're looking, they're looking throughout the, 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 the watershed council because that's one of the things that they, they feel like, one of the issues is that they have. Big buy-in on a place like Milwaukee, but they probably don't have as, as strong buy-in as some other areas. So that's why they want to gather some data and present that to the other jurisdictions. Um, that they, um, there could, there, there's, there's gonna be a focus on talent, uh, uh, acquisition and retention. And that's really, um, an issue in that they just really don't have a much, much staff in passing. They want a, you know, sort of a project or two management, they suddenly need some more overhead kind of staff. To keep these, you know, these grant proposals going or anything like that for the transition into a real program. Cause right now Neil is having to do too much admin stuff. Uh, and we really need to free him up or engagement with stakeholders and for fundraising, okay? Cause he's spending too much time, too much of his time on uh low yield kind of. Because he's spending too much time, too much of his time on, uh, low yield kind of activities where we need to focus him into the higher, uh, return areas. They need to diversify the funding. It was interesting when we had the, you know, sort of the, the, the whole board retreat is that, you know, like, who's, who's willing to go off and fundraise? And I gotta tell you, there were very few hands raised. They are, and I don't think that they're against it, they're just uncomfortable with it. Uh, a great many in the board. And so we feel like we have to, uh, expand the board to do two things. We have to diversify the board to actually have a goal, that'd be a little bit controversial, but less than two, uh, less than two-thirds of the board should be. Okay? It's got, you know, very specific, and they, they need to get some board members who are willing to go out and ask for them. And that's just, it's just a, an issue that people just can't do, even though they may be really dedicated to the goals of the watershed council. But, uh, we need to find more people who can do those kinds of things. There's a very detailed live here, uh, plan, um, that, um, I'm really not gonna go in, I'm gonna highlight a few of the things, is that they wanna give some emphasis, uh, to the Three Creeks area with West and NCPRD, make that a, uh, a more, um, uh, welcoming, you know, sort of recreational area to outpass the aquatic center. Uh, it's actually a, a real birdie habitat for the folks who are real birders in the area. And, uh, uh, we actually wanna get a closer relationship with the county, ODOT, and OLWS, and actually possibly bringing in some representative from those groups as members of the board. But going back to this unrestricted funding thing, they, they're very specific in the, in the goals, and that they said in, uh, in the year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they were looking to have at least a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for unrestricted um, um, annual salaries so that they can, uh, have that sort of overhead to pursue grants before they turn it into a project and free up, again, Neil for higher value activities. So that was kind of it. It's, uh, I can share the whole, um, um, strategic plan with people if, if they're interested.
Sure, that's in the rap.
Okay.
Um, can I ask, um, does, you, you were talking about the other entities they were trying to get at the table. So Oak Lodge Water Services was always at the table during the day. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
He was, so, okay. And then is NCPRD got somebody coming these days, Lauren?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that, the, the, the problems that, we, we had a few issues with the Happy Valley and Glass Towne, but we're, now we have some, some representatives.
Some representatives from, just from among the residents or actually from the cities?
Um, yes, from the cities.
From, from the cities?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
I'm sorry. They're not, they're not electives or not staffed.
They're not electives?
Yeah.
Okay, that's where I was going, because, yeah, there's been a couple, I know there's.
But they've, uh, they've been active for about last year.
Yeah.
Was there any conversation, um, was the word, um, around diversity of socioeconomic, uh, standards to?
It was throughout the, uh, it was, it was like a common theme throughout the thing, throughout the whole strategic plan, um, about DEI, uh, and I can't think about the impacts, uh, of, um, wetter west and drier drys impacting those communities and that kind of thing, really a, uh, real desire to, you know, diversify the board. As you know, that's a challenge for us all, you know? They face these challenges, but they, it, it is, it is written throughout, uh, the strategic plan, just like it is in many of our documents.
And they, I mean, yeah, they, when I was still under that port, they, you know, they were trying, but again, if they're trying to get people to, they're also trying to recruit people who will be money raisers, and it's not necessarily the same tool that's gonna diversify.
Maybe not.
Well, sometimes.
Maybe, yeah.
With what experience speaks volumes.
I'll say that money raising, yeah, is, is a big thing for all of the profits. And who perhaps that can do it or will need to do better, it's always a challenge.
I have to open my reports.
Okay.
I don't have much. TSP is meeting in November on the first, we're giving you future plans, that's a little more exciting meeting. Um, the statewide transportation phase now devolved into three different workgroups and the talks, little groups, that's why I wanted to share it. What they're talking about, um, maybe that's just one of the workgroups, active transportation, um, and transit is one of the workgroups, and um, projects from twenty-seventeen, other of those projects. So that's four, uh, three, uh, sorry, active transportation and travel things wrapped up in one.
Oh, I see. Are you getting a seat in one of these workgroups?
We have a lot of different members who are there. I'm not personally seeing one of those workers, so they spies all over the place.
One short update for me, um, I wanted to thank Council for, um, being at the grand opening of the Michael Service Center.
Where are you, Emerald?
Where are you?
Good to be here.
And thank you for not.
Yeah.
But it was really great showing them that they really appreciate it, seeing, uh, giving them the buy-in and support, I see. So it was great. And you're really warm and fuzzy to see all there in the rain. Um, and then just a question, because at the last meeting, we talked about an adjustment of, um, my C four liaison assignment, so I understand that will come back at the next.
I can send them up, totally.
Okay, that's great. I'd like to send a message to the C four crew and let them know. So do you want me to wait till after that's finalized or? Okay, I just wanna give them a heads up and do an introduction. Welcome to our, uh, welcome to the audience as we move forward.
Good.
Yeah, thanks again for, now I get to say it to your face, thanks for taking on the freedom of our ministry meetings, huh?
Oh, hello. Okay. Uh, yes, sir, my computer was updating slightly, which does sound, um. So I, we did have a cab meeting last week, um, uh, what we did, we went over our, our metrics for strategic plan. Right now, the cab, uh, has a three-goal strategic plan. Uh, the first goal is, is increase awareness. The objective is for community leaders and county residents to have greater awareness and understanding of the purpose of raising carbon in Clackamas County, which resulted in the meeting and, uh, we very much appreciate it, we pay some attention to that. Uh, the next one set up is for Oregon City in November, just still have the details on that. I will be attending that one, uh, person of all this time.
Oh, well, we're talking about a cab meeting, just the, the Oregon Coalition group? Yeah, I saw something about them, maybe November fifteen or something.
Yeah.
There's a huge meeting, yeah, I don't think.
Uh, so that's, that's the, the first goal is the increased awareness. Metric we're using, uh, both strategy behind it is develop and implement a communication plan to educate and engage community leaders in understanding the depth of poverty in Clackamas County and addressing global issues of poverty. Um, two of the metrics we've brought on so far, or that we've got established so far is number of presentations to community leaders and groups, which is certainly actually city one, number of information materials shared with government entities. Those are just some of the measures for that strategy. The next strategy and that goal is develop and implement a campaign to expand community awareness about poverty and the cost of living in Clackamas County. Um, metrics that we've reviewed, or a number of property national studies, articles disseminated by PJ and other methods, number of information materials distributed by, distributed to community partners, number of information materials distributed during outreach events. Um, we got some next steps. And, uh, the second goal right now is equitable services. Uh, the objective for this is to, well, the goal is to deliver accessible, equitable, culturally responsive services. The objective is county residents have greater awareness of services and service access. Um, so this is, this has a lot to do with their, their, the counties, uh, like resuscitation programs, uh, weatherization programs, things like that. We already have the buyers and obviously making sure that our, or sort of the marginalized communities are aware of this program, that they're getting the help they need. Part of that is making sure that, that when we go into the meetings, it's not just, you know, excuse me, excuse me, would say this, but I know a white person that speaks their language, somebody from that community that speaks that language, because that's very, very key. One of the strategies, again, develop communication plans to market social services and other Clackamas County services that is slowly encouraging those benefits. And speaking of low-income income, we're actually working, the cab is working on changing that term. We're no longer gonna be using the low income, um, you know, it hasn't a straight line and a negative connotation to it, so we're trying to find a better term to use to identify people um, that, that are struggling, and then I think one of them is, is financially challenged, one of them is, uh, you know, income constrained individuals, is just trying to get away from that low-income connotation. Because especially nowadays, it's like middle class is something, spread on that cost too, so I'm just simply put a little bit more respect on that as opposed to just, you know, this low income, this negative connotations that. Um, analyze program participant data to identify participant usage trends, including by subgroups and potential disparities. The other objective for this goal is the county residents can access services due to their preferred language. Uh, develop methods to collect data on language spoken among program participants, residents, secret services, and county in general. Um, translate written program materials into local languages based on English data. Develop standard protocol and training on using interpreter services, that's just. Uh, develop and implement feedback process for clients who access services using a language other than English. Uh, the third objective within that goal is households achieve and maintain basic food stability. Uh, strategy one for that is provide emergency rent assistance to families and individuals facing eviction homelessness. Uh, some of the stuff we're talking about with that is also partnering, partnering with more nonprofits so that there isn't a two-year waitlist to get your rental assistance, because all it does to actually things, it just pile things on. So maybe there's a way, we're starting to look at, if there's a way to reach out to other nonprofits who do this work and maybe provide direct immediate assistance, and then the county committee reverse those groups. Um, for the weatherization right now, uh, for example, they are slowly starting to get, send some referrals to uh, Energy Trust of Oregon. So we, we're gonna have them show up at the December meeting to kind of give a presentation on what they provide to see, we can more of the county to get some of those, everything, so, like, that. Because they have a lot of programs you don't have to pay for, that's, that there's a lot of people on the, you know, they can get the same services faster than them. Provide utilities for individual and families to maintain services, provide rapidly housing and permanent supportive housing, services to high need residents, provide emergency shelter in severe weather or natural disaster, that's provide transportation services that assist residents in meeting and activity needs. This will develop processes to support potential clients waiting for services. Uh, a lot of the stuff that, a lot of the strategy that we need to put together, I'll send this out to you guys to see if you can read the metrics. We do have some metrics associated with these, quite a few, whatever, we have some metrics associated, I'd love to hear your guys' feedback on those metrics, if there's anything potentially add on as a metric that we might not be covering. Uh, and the third goal towards strategic, strategic plan right now is cultivating belonging, which is awesome because the community is a pillar that just come out.
Yeah.
The Coalition of the Community is coming, just come out with that, uh, that report, so it's kind of worth your timing. Uh, the objective here would be agency staff reflects the culturally and demographically diverse community experience and poverty as the scale of clients to perform effectively and is committed to the agency's mission. Uh, that strategy, one of the strategies about this goal is recruit, hire, and train a diverse staff of qualified, talented people with an emphasis on attracting, by, by cultural staff. Increase the cultural awareness and confidence in senior staff. Uh, the second objective, the social services will actively partner with culturally specific organizations to serve historically underserved communities. Uh, we're kind of speechless, so I'm there, uh, part of the community-based organization that's kind of we've been talking about earlier. Uh, the last objective within this goal is the program participants report high levels of satisfaction with the services they receive and experiences they have in accessing those services. Strategy right now, we have for that is review client survey results quarterly slash annually to identify program. What process changes, so. This has been something that we were working on for, for the last few months, and we're, we're now getting to the metrics of it, how to measure it. So it's started really in the right direction, and I'm just, I'm excited for this part, okay? And, uh, again, I'll send this out some minutes, have all this, and if there's any metrics you can use or, you know, if there's a question we're asking as far as to our metrics, if we obviously wanna challenge the metrics, make sure they're measured. Uh, I would love to hear feedback on it.
Thanks for sending that out. Okay, um, so I have three things. One is just to remind everybody Hillside, uh, groundbreaking tomorrow, to see everyone there.
Just at three P M.
In three P M. Um, and then I have some slides.
Oh, Mary, can you give that, if anybody puts up the address that's on that flyer, uh, it maps way out, like, uh.
Lost a lane, I'm like, where the heck is Lost a Lane?
The reason that is, is because it's taking place within a new street structure.
Yeah.
And those, those street names haven't been updated into the map yet. So please proceed to the regular Hillside location. Um, you can put in Hillside Manor as your GIS destination if you like, and then just follow signs, but please don't go out to like, you know.
Their auxiliary site.
Yeah, it's actually just somewhere.
So you're gonna be a big, a big faulty story, Billy?
Yeah.
Um, so this weekend I went to the annual dinner fundraiser that they do at Clack, Clack, Clack Co-kins, Clackamas County Children's Association or mission, and they had boards up that I took pictures of that are the, um, Monroe, uh, their plans for the Monroe.
Center.
Uh, Head Start Center, that's okay, yeah, that works. Um, so there's another one that said exterior, uh, go to the one that's the exterior elevations, um, the next one, that one. So that's, uh, it's gonna look all spiffy, they are calling it Spring Creek Head Start. And, um, I, uh, uh, Ben Johnson, who used to be on our, uh, park and who has been involved in the design of our three parks, is also uh, helping with their playground there, he was at their dinner the other night. Um, and, um, so anyway, uh, go back, so that's like the overhead view of the building area. And then I'm working lots and stuff, play areas, and they're setting up an outdoor classroom as well um, between the building and the play area. Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to share those, um, it's exciting to see, see some plans, and hopefully this, uh, you know, hopefully we'll see permitting and stuff and movement happening in the coming months. And I think they're still hoping to finish by next summer so that they can welcome new classes in the fall of twenty-twenty-five, so very exciting.
I think a subterranean section of the Spring Creek goes very close to that.
Close to that, it probably does, yeah. And I guess, I'm, I'm sure Len is the one who, I think, suggested the thing, because, because we down the rest of them weren't necessarily, um. All right, my fingers got too, like, too, like, happy, so. And, um, and then finally, I did want to, um, circle back to our favorite topic for council reports, which is what's the latest, what's the latest inaccurate thing the county commissioners are saying about Milwaukee Bay Park? Yeah. Yeah, so Counselor Schrader had an article in the Milwaukee Review, I hope you saw it. Um, uh, well, actually, I hope not that many people saw it. I just wanna address a couple of things that she said in, um, that she said in her article, so, uh, I agree with, but, um, there were several things that I thought were worth, uh, calling out. She, um, she commented that the city had reallocated two hundred fifty thousand dollars from our budget that had been allocated to the park. Uh, and that they were concerned about that. It's true, we had two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we rolled it over a couple times in the budget, and given the tight budget, um, year we had, we did reallocate that money, but I would like to assure the county commissioners that if, uh, uh, they come to the table and we, and I get the park moving, we will find a way to fund the two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, she also said, uh, and I'm quoting here, since twenty-seventeen, NCPRD has contributed more than one million dollars for park improvements to Milwaukee Bay. Um, she also said, uh, and I'm quoting here, since twenty-seventeen, NCPRD has contributed more than one million dollars for park improvements to Milwaukee Bay. Um, I do think that, you know, they claim that they spent a million dollars on, um, the planning for the phase three, the public, there was a huge public outreach, you know, a process that went on for over a year, there was a committee plus all the, uh, consultants that do the design. So I don't, do not quibble with their dollar figure that they spent a million dollars, uh, on designing phase three. But they have not spent money on existing improvements. So to the extent they keep claiming, uh, contributions to the existing state of Milwaukee Bay Park, that's just simply not true. Um, all the improvements have been in, and, and actually, if you read their letters and their response to people, it says since twenty-seventeen. Well, that's all, that's a tacit acknowledgement, because the existing improvements have been in place since twenty-fifteen. Um, so, um, uh, Schrader also claims that NCPRD owns the amenities in the, we own the land and they own the amenities. Um, I don't think that that is true. I have not gone back to the, uh, to find the IGAs that dealt with phase two of the park, but, um, I do not believe it's true that they own the amenities. But it is true that, as she said in her letter, that they service the park through operations maintenance at special events. And I do wanna, uh, express appreciation for their stewardship of the park. Uh, the, in particular, like, they have to take out the dock every winter and put it back in every spring. And, you know, there are certain things they do to preserve the, uh, functioning and longevity of the assets in the park. And I appreciate staff's work on all of that. Um, but boy, in terms of calling it out as, as a place where they hold events, they hold one concert a summer. And it's well-attended, people like it, but we could be having so much, so many more events there. It could be so much more of a center for community gathering than it is. Um, and, uh, I'll just say, um, she writes that we need to rebuild trust with one another to move forward, and that's a point upon her with, which I agree, uh, but how do we move forward when they've refused for over a year to meet? Are offered a resume meeting, two-on-two stands? Um, and I would note, you know, we have, uh, talked about it before, the IGAs that were done in twenty-twenty-one to try and, you know, build the park, had a clause that said we would, um, pay them back if we never treated anybody, if we were to leave the district, treat anybody differently. Um, you know, if, what they're concerned about is their ability to program the parks. Uh, I mean, I think that that, that proviso in that I G A could be expanded upon. And it would be something that I think we'd be interested in, you know, another reason to get together to talk. But, um, you know, whether or not we leave the district, we could have agreements for shared, uh, programming of the park, shared use of the park. That's sort of what they did with the Wichita School, right? They, they bought back, uh, part of that, they formulated that deal so that they got use of the fields there and, and the facilities. Um, so I mean, I do think, um, you know, there are, uh, things that would get taken to the table that I do think we have things to discuss, so I'll just leave it at that. Not really really. Do you feel sometimes like Mr. Thomas writes everything? But anyway. Uh, so with that, um, I guess if we're done with council reports, I will read the script that after the study session, council will meet in executive session, so to authorize statutes, one ninety-two point six-six-zero-two-D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on their negotiations. That, study session is adjourned.